You're on.
Okay, all right. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Maribella.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Whitmore.
Here.
Bruno.
Here.
All right, tonight's invocation. Lord God, you created and sustained the universe. You loved us all into being. It is you who gives us every good thing. We thank you for the many blessings that you bring into our lives. We thank you most especially for our faith, families and friends, our neighbors and our coworkers, whose human love is an image of your divine care. Increase our gratitude this Thanksgiving and help us to recognize all the good things that we have, both large and small. Magnify our desire to share what we have with others so that they too may be grateful to you. We come before you asking for your spirit of guidance and generosity so that we may serve your people of Winthrop Harbor faithfully. Bless our nation and protect us from all threats to our freedom. In Jesus's name, amen. All right, we move on to approval of the minutes of previous meeting. I need a motion to approve the November 4th, 2020 virtual regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, discussion on the minutes, previous minutes. Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin. Maribella. Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to mayor's report. I know there is nothing under here, but there's a couple of items that I want to discuss. The first item, it actually should be, it's under the fire department, but I, it should have been under his mayor's report. And that item is the, let me see, make sure I get this correct. The mayor's approval of the foreign fire insurance treasurer bonds. I need a motion to approve the mayor's, to approve the mayor's approval of the foreign fire insurance 2% treasurer bond.
So moved.
Again.
Second. Now, I'm pretty sure the board understands what this is, but for transparency, for anybody that might be watching this on video, I'd like Chief Street to explain this for us.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Little bit of background, the 2% otherwise known as the foreign fire tax statute was enacted by the state of Illinois quite a few years back. And to make a long story short, it essentially takes 2% of any insurance premium that is paid to an insurance company outside of the state of Illinois and calls that 2% a tax and kicks it back to the local fire departments, wherever those policies originate from. So the 2% of the foreign fire board of each community is a separate board voted on by a membership of that fire department. And it's, it's an official board. So there's a president, a vice president, a treasurer. They accept that money. It's doled out, collected and doled out by the IML, Illinois Municipal League. They do all the work. They take a couple of percentage points off of it for their effort and pass it along to those foreign fire boards. Part of the statute says that the treasurer of the board is supposed to be bonded, such essentially an insurance policy on that money in case that given treasurer does something wrong with the money. So that fund is protected. The statute also calls for the mayor to approve that bond, essentially checks and balances system. So that's pretty much it. The board takes those funds and the membership of the department can request funds for certain projects around the fire station, things that aren't budgeted by the annual budget, just to benefit the fire department or the membership. And so the requests are always scrutinized heavily by the board. It's not just, money is not just thrown out there, you know, for things that aren't worthwhile. And so that's pretty much it. Any confusion or questions about that? And so this measure in this vote is simply to allow the mayor to accept the treasurer's bond. It's really just a record keeping thing. It has nothing to do with spending or anything official other than meeting the state statute.
Justin, how often does this come to our agenda? How often does this, is this every year?
I guess that would be, that would be up for some clarification. I think is the, the bond is renewed annually. So it's possible it would need to come for you for approval once a year.
But I've never seen it before. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, it's, it's been a little ambiguous over the years. Some municipalities don't go through the formality of having the mayor approve it, but by statute you're supposed to, so.
I believe our professional that's in the case of this, the professional that's handling this can handle it without the mayor's approval. That's just my opinion. And I hope that would be the board's opinion because he's the professional handling it. I don't think it needs to go through the mayor. I think at this point, we're struggling with this Winthrop Harbor Fire Department. I believe this person that's in charge right now can handle it and take care of everything that does. Bring it to the board and then we can talk about it. My opinion.
Any other questions for Chief Street? All right, I'll ask for a, thank you, Chief Street. I'll ask for a roll call. I'll ask for a roll call. Sorry.
Hargit. Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Carried. The second item that I wanted to discuss is last Thursday, actually last week, I received quite a few calls and text messages and even emails regarding the sucking of the leaves, the not getting done. On Thursday, I contacted our contact, Josh at Root, and he informed me that they have a number, quite a large number of employees out with illness. And he's doing his best to cover the village. And he said that he's trying to get as many guys up here as he could possibly get, get the leaves picked up. He did reassure me that they would get done. It may have to go beyond November 30th. And he'll do it as best he can, as long as he can. So I just want to let everyone know. I, I did respond to all the text messages and emails and phone calls that I received. And I, you know, I put it out there on my, I think my mail page as well. So I just wanted to let everyone know. And then if anyone, any residents are watching this, I just want them to know that they're going to be getting them picked up. I just don't know how fast they're going to get up, get up here to do that. So just so everyone knows that.
And I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I talked, I talked to Tim today. According with what the mayor said, I've had a lot of people call me. We've dealt with this. The mayor and Tim have talked several times. Group has promised us that they're going to come through with this.
Yeah.
And the mayor said it's, it's going to come. They promised us they would come through November, but we know that might not happen. But in that event, they're trying to get it. My, my block has leaves for two weeks. Tim's blocks had leaves for two weeks. So it's not like they're even picking or choosing. So I want the public to know that it's not, it's not. My previous house, I never had to worry about it. Put them in the pack. I just want people to know, nobody's picking and choosing. They're working on it. They do have problems. Everybody has had problems with the COVID thing. I hope people get that. It's a real thing. It's coming to us. They promised us they would have it by note, the date they said. I doubt they do. I think it's going to go into December. That's just my opinion.
I mean, Josh even told me that he tried to hire part time or temporary people to help him out, but he had no luck doing that. So, but he said he'll, they'll, they'll work on it. I'm sure he reassured me it will get done, so.
Well, they are.
I just, yes.
I was just, they, they are continuing to pick up anything that's in the cans every week, right? I mean, the vacuum has, has been delayed. And I realize for larger properties, that may not be a, something they can do to get rid of all their leaves. But, you know, they can still put their six bins out and those have, have been collected every week. It's the vacuum that's behind.
True. And I told some of the individuals, some residents that had contacted me. On my street, most people are able to rake out to the curb. I can't. I did it one year and I left for Boy Scouts. And about a half hour later, my wife called me and said, the water is halfway up our driveway and the cul-de-sac is full. And that was back to the time of John Hogan. And he came over with a stick and it was poking down into my, I have storm sewer drains on both sides of my driveway. I can't rake out to the street. I, I just can't. So I put them in my bins and I put them out every, every Friday morning. But that's just me. I know a lot of people do rake out, but I, I just don't because it does, it's, it's not going to work for me. Because if I break them over the curb and we get a downpour of rain, lo and behold, we're going to have a flood. So it, it's just doesn't work for my property. But yes, definitely six cans. And I told them to try to do that if nothing else. And hopefully there, some, some residents are doing just that, so.
Yeah, the, the cans are there. It's, it's the, the leaves that we blow. And there's a lot of people, 11th Street. I go there every day, 10th Street. And I'm not just, it's all throughout the harbor. But people have to be patient. They've had issues. We've all had issues. Friday, we're going under another, by the governor's issue, we're going under another. Please be patient. It's, I'm not one to believe in what it is, but it's happening.
Thank you, Trusty Maribella. Thank you. All right. So we move on to village administrator's report. Greg Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I'll talk about the tax levy when we get to the finance section of the agenda. But a couple of points to Trusty Maribella's point. COVID remains an issue, including here locally. It's had its impact on how we operate at Village Hall and our village departments. The governor has directed that all the, the entire state moved to tier three mitigation effective 12:01 a.m. on Friday, so Thursday night going into Friday morning. The requirements change to some extent. I will be communicating that out to, in detail to both staff and the business community sometime tomorrow. Transition and finance and human resources continues. We had a call with, a Zoom meeting with John Blackburn this week. And we're going through some items to move that transition forward. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with Amazon about consolidation of our accounts. We have multiple accounts with Amazon. Their government liaison is going to meet with us. There will be potential cost savings involved with that. The deployment of the recycling program. We're on a conference call tomorrow to begin to have that bins deployed over to the public works department. Area has already been identified by Tim. He's given us photos of where he wants those set up and we'll be able to work with Swalco to make that happen. Waiting, still waiting for contact from some of the board members on their bios and pictures for the website. Our action photographers getting anxious. So when you guys are ready, you know, just send that over to me. Food truck ordinance is still on the radar. Once we get past the tax levy and the additional transition training, we'll be able to turn around and start having some discussions about potential model ordinances and what we want this ordinance to look like come spring. We're waiting for disposition on the CARES grant. I spoke to one of the members of the board today who inquired about the status of that. There's probably about two thirds of the units of government who have applied that are still waiting for their grant approval. That extends to township government, school districts as well as municipalities. I'm sure Trusty Whitmore is going to touch on this, but we've had some discussion about what do we do with the tree lighting? What do we do about a parade? What do we do about cocoa or lunch or pictures with Santa? I'll defer that to Trusty Whitmore with her report just so we can turn around and get an idea of where we want to go with some of these traditional programs. And it's tough to be a kid during COVID. I mean, it's tough to be an adult, there's no doubt about it. But, you know, you're only a kid for a short period of time. And, you know, it's, it's a shame clock ticks on that. And this is imposing on, on kids being kids. But that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor, members of the board.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg Jackson? All right, we move on to clerk's course.
I gotta say, that was the quickest one that I've ever been a part of. That's nice.
It's because Julie made me do it.
Thank you. All right, move on to clerk's correspondence.
I have nothing.
All right. Move on to old business there isn't. So we'll move on to new business, committee reports, community development, Trusty Hargit.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the request to proceed with petitions to annex 9689 West Franklin Street and 41660 North Park Avenue, both in unincorporated Zion by directing the village attorney to draft ordinances, annexing the properties to be considered at a future meeting.
Second.
Second by?
Trusty Maribella's second.
Okay, discussion?
So we have the information in our packets. It's two property owners that currently own properties just south of us in unincorporated Zion that are looking to annex in. As outlined by Pat and, and Greg, there's no cost to the village and staff are requesting or recommending that we move forward with this.
Just any other questions? All right, move on to a roll call. Julie?
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Right, motion carried. Thank you, Trusty Hargit. We move on to finance. Trusty Weiss.
Thank you. I move that we approve accounts payable warrant 2020-12 in the amount of $148,161.07.
Need a second?
I'll second it for a second.
Okay, thank you. A discussion on the warrant. All right, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Maribella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
And Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second item we have is a discussion on the 2020 tax levy. I don't know if all of you got the email that Greg gave to us a couple of hours ago, but I'm going to give this over to Greg.
Trusty Weiss, thank you, members of the board. It's that time of the year where we have to make a decision on what the property tax levy will be to support funding operations. The 2020 tax levy supports operations for the 2020, 21, 22 fiscal year. I'm sorry, those taxes are paid in the 21, 22 fiscal year. I have presented you with four options of 4.9%, which would give us about $89,574. A 2.5% tax levy at $45,701. 20, 2.3% tax levy, keeping with the Consumer Price Index of $42,045 and a zero tax levy to be flat. I want to let you know that based on the tax levy and then the extensions that come afterwards, we generally receive about 54, on average, 54% less than what the requested extension is. So though we may be requesting $89,000 as part of this tax levy, our actual, what we probably are likely to actually realize on this is $41,000. I provided an extension history going back to 2013. And as you can see, we pretty much kept up with the Consumer Price Index for, for the rate of actual increase, the physical amount of money after the extension that the village received, with the exception of 2019. 2019, we did no increase to the tax levy. But as a result of the extension, we ended up losing $20,184 based on the, based on the extension. We anticipate, for your consideration, before you decide on the percentage that the levy should be, what, what percent of levy should be applied. I listed out anticipated expenditure increases that we can anticipate for the upcoming fiscal year. We are currently operating on a $3.09 million budget, which is significantly less than what we've done in past years. But we can expect a 10% increase in employee health insurance, 5%. And that's for the police department and our regular employees. Employee health insurance increase for public works of an estimate of 5%. Workers' compensation insurance of 10%. Public works per the collective bargaining agreement, which is already in place, an increase of 2.5%. Police department payroll increase through the collective bargaining agreement of 2%. We also have debt service for capital leases and non-discretionary, which are non-discretionary spending items that are still on the books for the coming years. And in addition, we can expect that the fire department will request, and Chief Street will be talking about this a little bit later, a minimum, a minimum of $71,000 for EMS support to keep our ambulance staffed 24/7 within another anticipated six-figure to capital purchase for fire equipment. The response to the challenges, and I think this bears a little bit of reading, and I don't want this to be a long, drawn out presentation, but village staff with the support of the mayor and the elected board took an aggressive approach to belt tightening as the result of the challenges attributed to the COVID outbreak. Reductions in the fiscal year 2021 general fund corporate operating budget expenditures for active departments were as high as 26.9%. Of 120 hours of administrative support staff, only 40 remain with 20 of those hours assigned to an enterprise operation. Human resources, finance, treasury, AP, AR, grant writing, community development, economic development, code enforcement, as well as village administration, all of these functions are now being managed and conducted by only three people. The emergency management agency has been dissolved. The remaining community service officer has taken over police records with the retire, with the resignation of the former incumbent. And in essence, this has resulted in all but eliminating the CSO program. The police department as a whole has reduced staff equivalents by four FTEs. Public works by one and a half FTEs. Park and recreation by one full-time employee FTE. The staffing numbers may appear small to anybody unfamiliar with village operations, but for active departments, the percentages range from 50% to 17.7% in reductions in staffing. Though there are private sector models and practices that can be applied to the public sector, the public sector cannot be run like a business. The marketplace is different. Case in point, the free rider problem and the requirement for public sector to deliver services with non-excludable benefits. We have statutory requirements that at times limit our ability to get out, get more out of our dollars. One of those examples alone is prevailing wage. In addition, there are limits to how and how much we can raise financially to support our operations. Discussions may be around the subject of how much further can our village government reduce? The answer is simple. What services is the community or the board willing to suspend or eliminate? I have provided charts with percentages and dollar amounts impacted or by staff reductions as well as budget reductions. And in the concluding remarks, you'll find that the median home value in Winthrop Harbor is 194,200. The homeowner of a median value home is paying $784 annually for municipal services. The proposed levy increase on average will be $31.21 for the entire year. Average cost to the homeowner for full municipal services will be $2.23 a day. That's for police, that's for fire, that's for public works, that's for parks and rec, that is for everything we do every day. The village property tax rate is 11.97%. And as, if you look at the graph I provided, the only municipality that comes in lower than Winthrop Harbor with that tax rate is Wakanda. So that is, I took a number of communities. So that's all I have for right now. I leave it to the board for discussion. But we've got a tough year ahead of us. We don't know where the revenues are going to come in. We're all hoping that COVID is something of the past. As of Friday, we start losing gaming dollars again.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we don't know how far this, this next, next COVID spike and how, how long it's going to last. We just don't know.
I'm Trusty Maribella, I'm going to talk, please, mayor. So I get everything that's going on. And I'm glad we hired Greg Jackson to do what he does. He's done a phenomenal job at showing us what we need to do. But as a board, we need to decide what we're going to do. We're shutting down businesses per the governor's order. So we're, we're doing what we're doing per the governor's order, which we have to do because they control the licenses. I know Bob Long doesn't like this as much because he's, no. Just, he's an attorney and knowing, and he knows how to guide us, to direct us to what we do. I've been in this position for 12 years now. I get what's going on. This is a different society right now. This is a different what we're doing. Greg Jackson has provided us with the information we need to move forward. Do we want to raise taxes? Absolutely not. Are the schools, are big taxes? Absolutely yes. I have since moved from beach park taxes, which my school taxes were less. I have moved into Winthrop Harbor. I love Winthrop Harbor schools. The taxes are higher. It's Winthrop Harbor School taxes or comparable. They were less before. We have to decide what we're going to do. The fire department, Justin works for Zion. He knows what Zion's dealing with. He does us a favor. This man does for us less of a wage that we could ever hire a chief. As Winthrop Harbor residents, and this is online, and I get it. We have had the benefit of the people that love our town, the people that do for what we want to do as Winthrop Harbor. We have them people in place. We need to decide what we want to do. We have people, this man does for the Winthrop Harbor Fire Department less than we could ever hire somebody. People do. You know why they do? I've talked to the Winthrop Harbor Fire Department people. They live here. Oh, we do this. We're doing this to keep this going. We got to decide what we want to do to keep the revenues going. As, as Winthrop Harbor, I'm born and raised here. I love this town. But we as a people have to decide what we want to do, what we want to pay for. Do I want to pay more? No. Will I? Absolutely. Why will I? Because I love our town. We got to decide what we're going to do. And all these board members here, we have to decide what we're going to do. It's election year. I'm going up for election. I don't really care. No, I don't care. I care more about our town than me getting elected. I care more about what is good for Winthrop Harbor than even being elected. I don't even know, anybody would say that, but I do. I don't really care. I've done it for 12 years. But you know what I do? Do for what's best for my town. And that's what the people at the barber have to get. What do we want to do for what we got? And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, and it's harsh. But I'm sorry, I'm the person doing this, but it is harsh. Our fire department goes out, busts their ass every day to do what they got to do for a less wage. But we got people coming in that'll do it for that. Our police department outstanding. They do it, they get paid the good way. And I'm not doing it that way. But what I'm saying is, you got to get in your mind, But what I'm saying is, you gotta get in your mind, what are we gonna do for the village of Winthrop Harbor? What are we willing to do for the village of Winthrop Harbor? And I'm sorry for ranting a raven, but I'm a lifetime person with the barber, and I care about this town, so I'm sorry.
Thank you for your input.
Trustee Maribella, you, you brought some good selling points, but. The one thing I want to bring out is that the average increase for the average home is only thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. And when you think about it.
Fritz, I'm for it.
You know, I don't, well, you know, what, what I'm trying to say is that it would only be thirty-one dollars more. Think of what you spend on today, even in this pandemic of what we're doing. You know, that's what, that's a case of bottled water. Gasoline, a half a tank or full tank of gasoline. And, and, and here we got, you know, around forty-one thousand dollars that we're gonna realize, which doesn't even make a dent in what we have to do. And how to run this community, because I love Winthrop Harbor too. And so, I feel thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cents is, is miniscule. Compared to what we're really facing between now and the end of this pandemic and the lost revenues and everything else, we have to figure out. How to take care of this community, again, you know, we got services that we need. And we're a small community, we have, we don't have a large staff. So thirty-one dollars and twenty-one cent increase, that's miniscule, you know, and I can afford it. So. I'm basically for it.
Two dollars and twenty-three cents a day.
Yes.
Yeah, anybody else, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I just want to say. No matter what the amount, I don't ever take lightly any tax increase that we're doing, no matter what it is, I mean, we don't know what. That amount is to anybody, you know, so. I agree, you know, that it's needed right now, and I understand, but I don't want to ever take lightly that, you know, to just say it's only this amount. Because we don't know what that amount means, you know, to the different taxpayers. And some of the points that Greg brought up about tightening our belts and not knowing what's coming, that's what. Our residents are experiencing too, you know, as they're tightening their belts, they don't know what's coming as well, I, I get that, so. I do think with everything, especially in light of, you know, reading Justin's letter and everything that we need. You know, I do agree with, I'm going for the maximum that we're allowed at this time. But I do want to, you know, reiterate that, that we can't take lightly any time that we're asking for people to pay more than. Possibly pay more than what they did before, but I do agree that it's, it's needed, and I would like to see. You know, able to do something as far as. Helping the fire department with what's needed, so that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, trustee.
Dana, Dana, I agree, but life safety, like you just said, life safety is more important to me than anything in Winthrop Harbor. The fire department, life safety means more to me than anything, and I reiterate, and I get, we can't take lightly. Because I know there's people that can't pay it, and I get that, and I'm sorry for that, but that's more important than anything is life safety.
Any other discussion?
Oh yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, you know, I, I agree with what others have said, right? This is probably one of the things on the agenda every year that is most conflicting. Right, and looking at the, I, I agree completely with Dana, so that we don't want to take this lightly, we don't know what, you know, even a small increase means. And I, I think it, it was exciting last year when the mayor brought forward the proposal for the zero levy. Right, not just because that means, you know, not increasing and being able to, to say to our residents, hey, we, we hear you, right? This is one of the things we hear most often, but then being able to turn around to other taxing bodies and say, hey, look, follow our lead, right? We're, we're, we're not the one making the burden here, but, but follow this example and, and let's find ways to, to do this together.
Dropped out of everything.
It, it, I mean, right, we had a surplus, we were investing in our, in our capital plan, and then COVID hits, and. I, I think Greg and the department heads and staff have, have done an amazing job over this last year to find places to cut. Keep us in the position that we are now, where we're still viable, where we're still able to offer the services, and. And this is always a tricky one, because the. The two things I hear from residents the most are, we, we need to address our taxes and we need to fix our roads, right? And so we, we've been investing in the roads, we were able to bring the zero tax levy last year. You know, and, and, and then COVID hits. But we also have brought proposals to say, hey, here's alternative ways of trying to address some of these things, and we took that out. For residents, they said, no, I don't, I don't want to do that either. Whenever we talk about cutting services, the, the response is, well, no, I don't want to cut any services, I also don't want to pay any more money. You know, find, there must clearly be government bloat there, you know, go, go find it. And, you know, our, our village has always been built on fiscal responsibility. On, on running very lean on, to trustee Maribella's point of having passionate staff. That while we want to pay them fairly, they're here because they love what they do, and they love our community, and they serve it well. And so this is one that I, I feel really conflicted on knowing, nobody wants to see their taxes go up, but we also don't want to see services cut. And, and I think it's, it's one that I'm gonna have to, you know, continue weighing when it comes to, to proposals, but Greg, I appreciate bringing the different options forward. A, a question I had for you, Greg, was. I realize that by state statute, we have to set a levy this month to, to move forward. Are we, are, are we able to modify a levy mid-year? I know we can't increase it, but can we decrease or rebate a levy? If we find revenues start, other revenues start coming in, or some of the CARES Act dollars, th- those sort of things come. Are we able to adjust mid-year at all?
No, the levy, once it's, once the levy is established by the board and filed with the clerk, it's, it's established.
But I think, I do believe we can give back the next year. If, if, once the levy is, the next time you can vote, you can give back.
Yeah, you can do, you can do rebates down the line, but.
Absolutely.
But adjusting the rate of the tax levy, once it's, once it's filed, it's filed.
I think, I think when you look at what we get, what, what we take in eleven point nine seven percent of our whole tax levy. And I've talked to some of our constituents, and you know what, I, I find it amazing that they don't understand their tax bill. When you look at sixty, almost sixty-nine percent of the monies that they spend goes to school. How many people do we hear about, hey, school system, what have you done to cut back? Or the county, or anybody else where you see the taxes that are going up, and some are flat and some have even got a minus figure. But I look at my tax bill all the time, and when I see certain things going up. I said, why, especially in schools, do we have staff members? You know, in certain places, couldn't we kind of lean out, or couldn't we ask the school systems to do the same thing what we're doing? I think the people of Winthrop Harbor need to start asking their school system, hey, what have you done to cut back? You know, I mean, you see new construction at Zion Benton. Okay. Where's the money coming from? That's part of our tax system going. We are running a lean Winthrop Harbor Village. I mean, when you see that the tax rates in the last few years, all we did is thirty thousand, forty thousand, twenty thousand here, every year. When we did the four point nine nine percent, yeah, it goes eighty-one, eighty-two, ninety thousand dollars, but we only get half of that. Times less. So it's, it's, it's basically, yeah, I can understand that taxing, it's a dirty word. But when it comes to Winthrop Harbor and what we do, we run a lean machine in the village of Winthrop Harbor. We've cut back as much as we can, and now we're down to the bone marrow, where do we go from here? So the people need to understand in the village of Winthrop Harbor that I don't enjoy increase, I'm retired. You know, I have a set income, every month, I gotta be very careful in what I do. But when I see it's only thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two dollars or two dollars a day. I say to myself, what do I buy in the grocery store that I can cut back on that would make up that thirty-some dollars? Now, some people, I understand, I gotta be able to do that. But Winthrop Harbor people, please, ask your school system, how come you're, where we're spending sixty to sixty-nine percent in the school system?
Fritz, I will, I will just comment on that, just to say, we don't have to go into it, but. Schools do not have the other options for revenue that we do, you know, so they are, it's not always a fair, I know what you're saying. Just to make clear that it's not an exact comparison as far as the revenue, you know, and the percentage of the tax bill. Because we do have other options for revenue that schools don't have, but I do, I do take your point.
I understand that, but here's the thing, I've gone to some of the school board meetings and I've asked questions. About their general maintenance, and why don't, why can't they do general maintenance, and where's the funds for general maintenance? Well, we deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance is very costly. When you defer maintenance on anything, you're gonna double, triple, quadruple your cost. And trustee Maribella understands that he's into that part of that aspect of it. And when I asked the school system, where did the money go for general maintenance? Well, we deferred it and took it to someplace else. And now all of a sudden you got brick and mortar, you got machinery, and you got things going bad. You know, because you're putting in the staff or you're going somewhere else. I would love to see the school systems have an austere program also, and also the county. You know, and the other things that go through the tax system, I would like to see that too. So we're doing, we're doing our part, I would like to see the other municipalities, or, you know, the county do the same thing, the school system do the same thing.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, we, we can't keep. Flatlining our taxes every year, while especially, you know, the high school is spending. Thirty, forty million in two years on specialty projects, where we are literally trying to patch up the roads and. You know, only have single ply toilet paper at the Parks and Rec Department, I mean, we are literally operating on. The lowest level of budgeting that we possibly can, cutting people left and right, and we can only do that so much until. We are operating at the lowest bottom line. And, you know, obviously, nobody wants their taxes increased, but like Maribella said, we have a lot of people. Literally here, just because they love Winthrop Harbor so much, that's why they're willing to put in so much time and so much energy into Winthrop Harbor. And I mean, even a lot of the Parks and Rec events, most of that is only being able to be put on. Because so many people will donate their time and their money to our events, but we can't bank on that all the time. We can't bank on people donating, you know, two, three hundred dollars per event. We, and especially the fire department, I mean, they cannot keep operating with people. You know, just donating their time because they love the harbor, eventually, we have to prepare for people not, not be able to do that all the time.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore, for your comments.
Absolutely, so the, the best part of that comment was that I know several people on the fire department that make. Big money, they, they make union money, and I'm not gonna turn money into. Dana should know, teachers make big union money, I make big union money, union is where it's at. We have so many fire department people that make big union money, that come to Winthrop Harbor because their parents lived here. Or they lived here, or they did, I made the mistake once of doing something, and I'm not gonna lay it out on air, but. These people came to me and said, you know why we do this? You know why we do this? We do this because we want to do this, we sleep in here for pennies on a dollar, it's not because we want to do it. It's because we love Winthrop Harbor. And that's huge, and it's people that make this happen, and we as a village board and we as a village. Are gonna have to come to grips with this, because it's what's happening. And if we really want this kind of protection, and we want this kind of people to support us. We need to act now, and, and I get it, and I get that it's soft, I get what it is. But if the village wants this to be, and no, no matter if. And Dana can go back and forth about the school, the schools are the biggest tax of, of anything. I'm a union guy, I'm a union electrician, the schools are the biggest tax of anything that we get taxed. They're union people, I get it, I'm union, I get from the union. But as a village, if we want what we have, if we want what we have, and I'm passionate about it. I don't care about election, I don't care about any of that, I care about what we have as a village. At Winthrop Harbor, if we want this to succeed, we need to do this. We need to be passionate, and we need to tell our people what we're doing, why we're doing it, because we're doing it because we want to do it. I live here, I'm here. I'm here a hundred percent, I want to do this, you know why I want to do this? Because it's what I believe in, and that's what we need to do. And if it's thirty bucks or it's a hundred bucks, and I get the older people, I love the older people in Winthrop Harbor. I've always fought for the older people in Winthrop Harbor, because I get they're on a fixed income. But if we want this to succeed, we need to do this. And bottom line is, I'm sorry if, if it hurts people or what it does. If you want Winthrop Harbor to succeed, we need to do this as a community and pay what we gotta pay. And Dana, I'm sorry, I'm boring you, I get it, and I love you to death, no, I do, I love you to death, but. It's there, it's what we need to do, and I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about Winthrop Harbor. I would lay my life out on the line, right on Sheridan Road for Winthrop Harbor, that's what I do, and I'm sorry, and I'm one of them people. I love our town, I've been born and raised here, I love this, I get what's happening. But our EMS, again, is depleting, you know why it is? It's, it's coming, and, and Justin's, we got somebody on board that works for pennies on a dollar. You know why we do? Because he loves this community. And we got so many people that do that, and it's harsh, and I get it. And I'm sorry, and the mayor, I, I don't mean to take over your job, but I care so much about this community, I could care less if people like me. I could care less, you know why? I care about this town so much, I want to do for this town, I don't care if it's right, wrong, or indifferent. I love this town enough, sacrifice my political career, because you know why? We need to do what's right for the town, that's what we need to do.
I agree with you, and I, I appreciate your comments. But, you know, I want to ask trustee Levin as well on his input on the tax levy as well.
Um, we are in a very hard situation, I mean, we're getting. Blows from the left to the right, and let's, you know, what to do. You know, well, secret, you know, I worked for the fire department, and. I tell you what, if it wasn't for the dedication of the guys, this village wouldn't have the fire department it has. Ten years ago. These guys not only work full-time jobs somewhere else, you know, doing different things. They're coming in, filling in these hours, coming in to do callbacks, just another call. Spending all this time away from, you know, their families. I mean, not just as guilty, I mean, I know I have personally. I haven't, four days, I haven't been home, I was going to work and then being at the department, because we hit a, a hard time. But looking what's going on now, that, that was nothing. And I think it's time that we need to really start to look and decide the future of where we want our fire department. And, you know, nobody wants to raise their taxes, but. You know, you're getting the best service out there, and we have a great group of guys. Everybody's been working for pennies, and I think it's time that we. You know, go forward, and you know, we're going to have to make some changes, and. We're gonna have to, you know, I think this tax thing would be a benefit for that department. Real quick, mayor, do we, do we need to make a motion for this tax levy so that Greg can put this forward?
Actually, it's gonna be on next month or the next meeting's agenda, we just have to give him direction on how to go.
Real, real quick before that, you know, we keep pulling in the fire department into the discussion, I know that was one, one bullet that, that Greg listed. Was the, the needs that they have, and we'll be having that discussion, but I mean, this is not an earmarked budget increase, right? I mean, this is raising the property tax at, at the, you know, as part of our annual levy review. This is not a, a, you know, fire tax or, or a public safety tax. Now, in our budget process, we have to decide how to spend those money and monies and prioritize it. But, you know, we keep pulling that in to say it's, it's time we step up and do something, but these are two separate discussions of, are we raising the taxes? For our budget as a whole, and then separately, you know, we'll have the discussion, and now what do we want to do with, with the fire department?
I agree, that's correct, trustee Hargit.
I, I don't agree on that, I agree that if we want our fire department, Winthrop Harbor, to stand strong, this is what we're gonna do. And if you guys are thinking that, you're ridiculous, our police department has been strong, my public works has been strong. And if you don't want to, to make our fire department strong, and you don't want to give Chief Street what he needs to do what he does. It's ridiculous right now, that's my opinion.
And it's correct to say, though, that they are two separate things, of raising the levy and then directing those funds.
Yes.
Two separate discussions. Well, that's all he's saying, is all he's saying. And but we brought it up because the need, that's one of the pressing things that we know, you know, is at the forefront, and that's why we need to do this. But the next step after passing the levy would be to say, making sure that we're putting that as a priority. Um, there, but it's correct to say that there are two, for anyone that's paying attention, that we're not automatically saying right now, if we say we want to go with the four point nine uh, percent increase on the levy, that that's going to go to that. We have to make that decision separately is all, is all trustee Hargit is saying.
Sorry, absolutely. But if, if you're ridiculous in thinking that it isn't for the fire department.
But no one, no one's saying that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll shut up about that. I'm sorry.
All right. And you have a question?
I'll just say, you know, because you were asking, I mean, I will support if we, um, if the board favors it, I will, you know, support the four point nine maximum that we can ask for in the increase in the levy.
Thank you. Anybody else want to put in uh, percent?
I agree. It should be at four point nine, so we should go in that direction.
Just trying to give Greg, uh, Jackson, uh, direction on uh, what kind of ordinance to draw.
So I'm, I'm sorry, trustee.
No, go ahead.
So I will, uh, if that's the direction of the board, I will work with uh, attorney long drafting the language. It's pretty much the same language every year. Uh, I have to put in some numbers as it pertains to our existing budget and appropriation uh, to complement that. But if, uh, if the board's okay with that, then that'll, I'll take those marching orders.
I think we should all take a little time to look it over. I know we only received the information a few hours prior to our meeting. Uh, I think we should all, you know, even if we take a day or two to look it over, maybe we can all reach out to you regarding our thoughts on that.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Very good. Thank you, trustee Weiss for finance. Uh, we're going to move on to uh, fire. Uh, trustee Levin.
Um, all I got to hear is uh, I'd like to open up a discussion uh, pertaining uh, to Winter Harbor Fire Department staffing. With that, I would turn it over to Chief Street.
Thank you. Thanks trustee Levin, and certainly thank you to all of you for the comments that you've already had in support of our department and support of our men and women of our department. It, it's true. Um, we staff um, a couple overnight at an hourly rate, but we also staff three to four each night that get fifty dollars for being there all night. Um, and if there's a call, they get their hourly rate for that. Um, so that's just a little bit of background on how our nightly staffing works. And I certainly don't want to insult your intelligence and repeat what I put in my letter, what I re, or and repeat what I told you off the committee of the whole, you know, quite a few months back. Um, but our department is kind of at one of those crossroads of uh, of needing some help or needing some decisions by you guys as the board on how to proceed with um, with staffing, with compensating. Um, you know, one of the number one bullet points of my note was, uh, we still, we absolutely have an unbelievably dedicated group. Uh, that's unquestioned. But the changeover has occurred over the last decade or so, and it's not just the, the, uh, the winter private residents coming together for the department. It's a, it's a handful of us that still live in the village and love the department and the village dearly. Um, but it's a bigger handful of um, you know, outsiders, if you will, or people from outside the village that come and help the department as, as a part-time job. And so many of those are, are full-time firefighter paramedics from other communities, which is great. We wouldn't be able to survive without them. Um, but we're, we're another extended COVID spell or, you know, from from, from really not being able to staff our department. And we do see that sometimes. We, we do have stretches of time where I don't have a paramedic available and I, I let trustee Levin and, and uh, you know, Greg know when that's the case. And sometimes we're lucky and don't catch a call during that time, but sometimes we aren't and, you know, have to call Zion or Pleasant Prairie or one of our other neighbors to help out. And so it is time to consider that next step of um, you know, adding some, some full-time personnel so we can just ensure that we always at least can get an ambulance out the door. You know, and, and hopefully that staffing will allow for firefighter engine as well. But um, I've put some proposals there with contract personnel. I mean, ideally, it would be great to hire our own, own village employee personnel, but I, I realize what the budget is. I realize the strong discussion of the levy and decreased revenues and increased costs. I get it. I, I a hundred percent get it. Um, so I'm trying to meet that happy medium of what can we do to, to really staff our department while also try to be responsible to, to the dollars that we do have coming in? So again, I won't repeat my letter and I won't repeat my proposal or my presentation from the committee of the whole, but I'll be happy to take any questions or comments that any of you have to expound on that a little bit more.
Uh, I have a question, Justin. Uh, in your write-up, uh, you talk about, you know, three full times on three different shifts. And you know, the dollar amount you estimate would be about seventy-one thousand dollars, correct?
Yeah, for that position of a twenty-four hour paramedic, the net increase from what we pay now, you know, an hourly rate twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So that to, to have a firefighter paramedic in the station twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five via this model, the way I compute it with uh, the hourly cost is about a seventy-one thousand dollar increase from what we pay now.
Yeah, my question then, next paragraph, uh, talking about increasing uh, the hourly pay for all levels. Uh, what dollar amount, it's not in there, but what dollar amount? And I'm not trying to Band-Aid it. I'm just trying to maybe cover, maybe if we do the dollar amount. You know, maybe that'll suffice until we're get out, you know, get, get out of this uh, pandemic and being able to afford to do more. I'm just, just asking a question.
Sure, that's, that's a very valid question. And you know, over the last few years, we have raised the dollar amount. I mean, it was much lower when I first started in early two thousand fourteen. And unfortunately, it's just not all about an extra fifty cents or a dollar or two dollars an hour for, for all of our folks. Um, it's certainly important to remain competitive with those other departments that we compete for essentially the same people. And so it's important to still do that to those that might not be, you know, full timers for us or whoever else. But it's just, it, it's not the be all, end all for being able to keep our people here.
Yep. Let me, let me interrupt you, Justin, and I'm sorry. Let me do it. Because if it wasn't for me being the person I am and the trustee I am and how I've created different things that, no, I went and talked to these people. These people that come to our department are full-time people that make a lot of money, union money. They come to us because they want to. If this village doesn't want to keep this fire department, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be sick to my stomach, one. I will give up the position I need at the public works and Tim, Tim will, Tim's on there, he's probably going to unmute what he's got. I will give up that position to have a full-time fire department person there. You know why? Because I care that much about this village and I care that much about our old people. When I talk about our old people, I talk about our old people paying taxes. People don't get it. And Dana's, look, he's, well, he's probably frozen now, but his internet, it's not that good, but he's eyeballing me. And I see him. No, and I do. But the, the whole point is we need this fire department in this village. If this is what we want to do as a village. If we don't want to do this as a village and we don't have, want to have a fire department, let's do it. We got the cheapest cheap we can ever get. And I know I'm getting mad, but I'm getting mad because I've lived here my whole life. My family has been on this fire department. We need this fire department. We need this fire department here because it saves lives. We did dispatch. We did dispatch. We, we did it. It, dispatch doesn't work that way. And it's not working that way. But we're doing it. You know why? Because the governor mandated it. And they mandated that we do this. Our fire department needs to be what it is. I'm not even over that. I'm over public works. My guy is going to be mad at me as hell when it comes down to when I have to talk to him again. We need this fire department to be what it is. The people that serve here, serve here because our chief has respect of all these people. They don't do it because they want to do it. They do it because they're here. They make way more money sleeping out in other places. They do it because they respect our chief. And they do it because their families have been from with the parver. And that's what it is. And John Lemon, you got to speak up to this. This is what these people do. They do this for our village. And it's important. And I'm sorry, but I'm so adamant about this because it's so important. It's pennies on the dollar. If we have to pay for outside service, it's going to cost taxpayers way more money. People don't get that. And Justin can speak to this because he knows what it costs.
Trustee Maribel, I do, I appreciate your passion. I really do. Um, I'll just add before anybody else types in, the last thing I want to do though is pit any department against any department. So I, I'm not advocating for taking spots for, for any other department. I just want to make sure that you're aware that um, that we do need some help on our end of the building for sure. I, I just want to make sure we have at least an ambulance available.
It's fine, but we will get there. That, it's not pitting anybody against anybody. We're a whole community here. And we are. And everybody is. Tim was a fireman. We, we get this. And I'm saying that as a person that loves Winter Harbor. That's all I'm saying. And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry I'm so passionate about it. But I'm passionate about this fire department because I know a bunch of old people that live in this town that need this fire department. It's not old people, it's young people. It's, it's whatever. It's somebody that has a fire. It's somebody that has an accident. That's why I'm passionate about it because it saves lives. We talk about COVID, all this stuff. This, our fire department saves lives. It's important to this community.
I don't want to step on trustee Levin's toes, and I'm sorry that, I'm sure you're wanting to speak as well, but I would like to consider maybe next meeting going into um, closed session so we can openly discuss, you know, what we might need to do in order to fund, you know, this request and be able to bring more money into uh, the fire department, just to make sure it's viable from here on out.
Yeah.
You can add go into closed session for that purpose.
Yeah, closed session would be for specific personnel. I mean, what I want to know and you know, trusting Maribel, you know, you spoke a lot, but I just want to know what like, I understand everything that um, the chief is proposing, you know, what, or is, is discussing, but I want to know is what are the specific proposals? So Justin, have you sat down with Greg to talk about what the different options are and how it affects the budget yet?
Yeah, we, I mean, we talk almost, we talk almost every day.
Right.
About impact.
I mean, do we have, I mean, I, I want to see, you know, we're, we're, we all feel strongly about this. So I think we'd all like to see some specific options. Um, you know, different degrees of options of, you know, what would be obviously the, the, the dream situation versus, you know, what, you know, re, you know, the most basic and what's kind of in the middle. So we have an idea of what uh, to discuss, you know, um, they're like, what's concrete, a concrete idea that we're going to discuss. Um, you know, and then say yes or no on this. Um, you know, because that's, that's the, what our job is, is to make those decisions.
Trustee McCarthy, that's not a difficult thing to do. Justin and I, in fact, he put some of that in his last presentation to the uh, to the village board and that committee of the whole meeting. But I mean, Justin and I have talked about everything from step pay to um, uh, hiring full-time firefighters as part of the uh, AFG grant process. We've talked about outsourcing, something that uh, uh, Justin's taken, taken a long, hard look at. So for us and, and to Justin's point, we, we talk all the time and, and have genuine concerns every time we get notification that somebody's leaving to go to another department or fulfilling family commitments.
Right.
Um, so uh, it would not take much and Justin, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. It would not take much for us to put together a package for the board uh, to digest uh, as we get ready to go into this next budget cycle for sure.
Because that's all we can act on is when we have a concrete, you know, concrete options, you know, that's what we'll need to make a decision on, right? I mean, we can talk, you know, for a long time about how much we support this, how much we understand, but we need some options and then say, this is what we want to go with and this is what we're willing to do, right? Uh, I mean, I don't know what else we have to discuss here other than to keep going back about how we want to, we want to help and we want to do more.
No, it's, it's the, it's the, it's the people that sleep in, right? So here's what you got to get about the fire department. You get the police department. I know you get it. You get what it is. It's solid. It, it's union. Our, our volunteer fire department is about people that sleep in. It's about the quality of personnel we got that sleep in. We have quality personnel that sleep in. We have people that would blow your mind away about the qualifications they have that they sleep in in the village of Winter Harbor because of our chief. They're not blowing smoke up his butt. What I'm telling you is because of him and because of what we have in Winter Harbor, we have people that are so overqualified that they're getting paid pennies on the dollar or what they get paid at a different department. That's what you guys aren't realizing.
No, we're realizing it fine, trustee. What we need is a motion or a proposal or a motion to do something. I mean, we can talk about that, but our job is to make motions and to vote on them about what we're going to do. I don't think anyone is not understanding what's going on, but our job is to act on motions there. So if you're proposing something specific like to do, then let's do that. But otherwise, let's send it back to say, what are the options we have so that we can act on it? I get what you're saying, but you know, unless someone's proposing something to act on now, let's get the information we need so that we can do that.
So I'm proposing that we give, I'm proposing that we give the chief of our fire department, I'm proposing that we give him the call to make people stay in our fire department.
Oh, right. But we obviously need to find the money somewhere and obviously we can't pull it out of thin air as of this year. There is no money. And that's why I proposed maybe next meeting, we can go into closed session, maybe personnel cuts is something that we're going to have to look into elsewhere. I know that we've already made several cuts to personnel already over the last year, but maybe we have to look at additional options to make sure that we can keep the fire department funded.
Uh, Chief Street, uh, Chief Street, do, do, do you think that we can uh, let's say when we go through the budget process, which is coming up around the corner, can we hold on until we get the budget process and we can start looking at numbers and seeing what we can do? Uh, can we? Or do we have to do something, let's say in the next couple of months?
Um, two, two quick answers to that. Number one, we serve um, at the discretion of you as a board. So if you, as a board, say, hold on a couple of months till we can digest all this, that's what we have to do. But the second point is just realize that um, like I said, there's multiple times throughout any given week that we don't have a crew available. And we don't have firefighter paramedics um, filling out applications every, every week. We have a lot of applications to bring on members, but they're eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-old members who are going to take over two years to train um, to put in those positions. And within those two years, five, six, seven, eight of the others leave. So, so yes, we can, we can wait while you um, go through the budget. Um, but just, just know there are many times of uncovered time slots that I can't even get an ambulance out the door these days. So to, to trustee McCarthy's point, my, my proposal is add contract personnel um, as soon as possible. Um, to everybody else's point, I realize the budget situation is what it is. Um, but trustee, I'd like to answer your question. If, if, if it's, if it's wait to analyze the budget, we wait.
No, I would like, I think. Uh, I would like uh, Chief Street and, and Greg Jackson and myself to sit down. Uh, if it's on Zoom, it's on Zoom, but uh, and put together a package for the board. And I'd also like uh, trustee Whitmore, you say we'll make more cuts. Uh, I'd like you to look at the budget and see where we could cut and uh, see what the impact will, will be on operations of that department. Got to turn your volume on.
Sorry, there was a crying baby a little bit ago. Um, and I'm not saying cuts to the fire department at all. I'm just saying.
No, no, I understand.
We might have to look at, you know, other avenues. Obviously, we can hope that maybe we have increased tax dollars down the road that we can spend. But I mean, unfortunately, the fire department is not our only completely, you know, and the only department that we need help with. We need help with roads, infrastructures, fire department. I mean, we're, we need help across the board. So yeah, if we do a, a increase in taxes, that's going to help, but only for so far. We also have to look at other avenues too. And and that's why I was saying, maybe, maybe we need to look at a couple of different options, not just one or two.
Let me back with uh, some ideas on where we might be able to cut and how that cut might affect that operation of that department.
Can I, can I interject, Mr. Street?
Yes, Greg.
Um, a, a couple of things. Um, first of all, uh, just to go back to something that was said earlier, what were the decision on the four point nine tax levy? Uh, I think everybody fully understands that that's not earmarked money. That money will go into the budget and we'll see how it goes and how it's allocated to departments. Second thing I would suggest is, well, I would say this. Seventy-one thousand dollars is a gap we need to fill, and I want to make sure the residents of, of Winthrop Harbor have an EMS service that they can depend on twenty-four seven. And, and I, I think they wouldn't expect anything less. Uh, we also have a budget gap from a placehold of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars this year that depending on what happens with CARES funds as we're approaching the six-month mark in our budget, we're gonna need to make some other adjustments and the seventy-one thousand dollars is just gonna, would, would, is just one small part of it. The uh, the important thing for us to note is we start making any more cuts and there is going to be an impact on operations. Now, let me just say this without a doubt that uh, if we find seventy-one thousand dollars someplace else in the budget, which I think would be a stretch. Um, I'm not saying it's not possible because that's all based on decisions and the board may decide to do A, B, and C. That department is going to, because we're working on low numbers, that department or wherever that money comes from, there is going to be an impact there. So to rock Peter to pay Paul may be prudent, but then again, may, may not. So I would, I would just make sure that we're all comfortable with that because that could be a sticky wicket. Um, finally, I think the appropriate thing is I, and trust me, Justin and I talked a, a lot, more than he wants to talk to me, trust me.
I bet.
So we talk, we talk a lot and we bounce ideas off and we share. We're very candid in what we say to each other. I've met with his command staff. I don't know, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, to get their feedback on some things. Nobody shy in that department about voicing uh, their opinion and their passion. And, and that's a good thing. We're getting ready to go into the budget process for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, certainly putting in this option into the fire department's budget, whatever option we decide, whether it's the AFG and we're gonna bring three full-timers on, whether it's the contract scenario, maybe it's A, B, C for the fire department and the board decides which one's the best with, within the dollars that we have. I believe that's the approach. I believe we need to turn around and be methodical when we do this because this is going to have a lasting impact on the residents and how we deliver services in this town. So I would just offer that up, that we need to be cautious and strategic in our approach on this and know that with our limited resources, what we allocate to one department, whether it's Justin, whether it's Joel, whether it's Tim, whether it's uh, administration, whether it's Scott and Parks and Rec, you're gonna take it from someplace else and we just need to realize that there is an impact there.
And it, that's my point. And you know, I'm always gonna be the outspoken one. I always will be. And I'm sorry I am. But my passion, if we, if we talk about what we care deeply about, what, what do you care deeply about? E- each and every one of you, look into your soul and tell me, what do you care deeply about? I get the police are important. I get it. I get the public works is department. I get all that. But in your soul, reach deep and tell me if your family member was dying and you needed someone to respond that fast, would you want it? That, that, and that's just my question. And, and this is on air and I don't care anymore. I, I'm saying if you really needed something and it's COVID and you need COVID and you need somebody to come in and take care of somebody in your family responsibly, where would you want your money to go? But, uh, all of you, reach deep into your soul and tell me that question. Tell me the answer to that question.
I, I think we're all saying the same thing, right? At, every, I, like, I think all of us are saying, when we call nine-one-one and we need medical services or we, we need assistance with a fire, we want someone to show up quickly and, and address that issue. Now it's, it's for, for Greg and Chief Street to go back and say, what are our options to make sure that happens? And I don't think we can be married to, well, it's always looked this way. So we have to figure out how to just build on that, right? If, if that's contracting out, if that's contracting a portion of services or that's bringing on full-timers, we have to be willing to look at every option to say, when we call nine-one-one and we need help, we need people to get here and, and, and there's a lot of different options to make that happen.
Yeah, but the nine-one-one didn't work when it was contracted out and then it came from Mundaline to here, dude, it doesn't work. I'm sorry. That's my, and I think Chief Street is on, or no, Chief Bromlich is on and D. Simone is on. It, when you contract that out, it's not the same. They don't know where they're going. They don't know. I've been a part of the, the VA. The VA has their own police. At Navy Base, now we're going to Virginia. When you contract that out, it goes right now at the Navy Base, our, our whole, and I'm sorry for getting off subject, but you gotta understand this. When it's nine-one-one at the Navy Base, it goes to Virginia. Then it comes back to Great Lakes. That's not a fact. I'm sorry. I've, I've been a part of it. I do life safety down there. It's not a fact. And I'm sorry for getting off subject. But it's not effective. And our thing going to Mundaline is not effective. They'll both agree with that. Do we have to do it because we did it? Yes. But we don't need our fire department doing that. That's my point. I'm sorry, I'm passionate about it. I'm gonna be passionate about it. While I'm on this board, I'm gonna do it.
Thank you, trustee Maribella. So we discussed the uh, uh, the Wentworth Harbor Fire Department staffing. And uh, I, I'd say, uh, like Greg had said, uh, Greg and Chief Street would get together and uh, put together some type of options, A, B, and C. And then we'll have more information uh, for when we come.
You can do a D too, if you want, Justin.
I'm sorry?
No, Justin, we could do a D.
Oh, okay. All right. So we move on. Let's go on, move on to police. Uh, trustee Maribella, or trustee McCarthy, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the awarded amount of one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents from the Department of Justice as part of the Patrick Leahy bulletproof vest partnership.
Second it, right away. Get, get it in now.
I had a discussion on that award. All right. Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Hi.
Levin.
Hi.
Maribella.
Hi.
McCarthy.
Hi.
Weiss.
Hi.
Whitmore.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Make a motion that we uh, enter into contract with Westreck Marina's related to security services for the twenty-twenty-one boating season as uh, presented in the packet.
Trustee Whitmore, second.
All right. Any discussion on that request?
There aren't any big changes. Is that correct? On that?
I'll answer that, uh, trustee. No, there's no big changes.
Thank you. I read it. Doesn't look like there's any changes from last year. So yeah, okay. Uh, we have a motion second. Uh, roll call.
Hargit.
Hi.
Levin.
Hi.
Maribella.
Hi.
McCarthy.
Hi.
Weiss.
Hi.
Whitmore.
Hi.
Right, motion carried. Thank you, trustee McCarthy. We move on to public works. Trustee Maribella.
I make a motion to request approval or design services for Holdridge Avenue over Dead Dog Creek Cover. Preparers contract for additional services and Baxter Women Consulting Engineers. So Tim has told me that this, we need to do this because we waited so long and it's, I think it's like three thousand dollars, but it's, it's something we gotta do. Make this go forward and we got the.
First, so you can.
Yeah.
I'll second, I'll second.
I'm sorry, trustee.
Okay.
Usually it's faster. When it's motion to adjourn, it's faster.
I thought someone said second, but I, I don't think so.
It's fine. But this is what we need to do. If, if Tim needs to speak, he can speak on it, but it's basically, we need to redo this because we waited so long, but it's something we need to do with our, what we need to do.
Very good. Any discussion on that? Any other questions?
Let's go on sides, mayor, with us going into that second bid process for Holdridge.
Right. Absolutely. All right, uh, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Hi.
Levin. Maribella.
Hi.
McCarthy.
Hi.
Weiss.
Hi.
Whitmore.
Hi.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Maribella. We move into public comments. Have we had anyone submit any questions for us?
Nobody did.
Okay, thank you. So we move into unfinished business. I'll start with uh, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, um, as Greg said a little bit ago, that we are looking to move forward with a social distance um, Christmas event here at the harbor. We are looking, instead of doing the typical tree lighting with um, the band and hot cocoa and everything over at um, the fire department, we are looking to do maybe just a drive-by in-your-car parade. Um, just again, so we can practice social distancing. Uh, we are just working out kind of final details as in what else we can incorporate. Um, obviously, we're still abiding by those guidelines. Um, so hopefully more to come and we'll put that all over Facebook and get it in the newsletter.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee McCarthy.
Yeah, I just have two things. Um, I just want to thank you, um, Mayor Bruno, uh, trustee Maribella, um, Tim, um, anyone who's been fielding questions on the leaf pickup. I feel like every year there's frustrations and concerns with it, but every year it ends up working out, you know. Groot, in my opinion, has done well with us. I think it's just tough to know that like, it's a struggle, you know, to do that. It's not an easy thing with the number of trucks. So I appreciate all of you who've had to field those questions and responded. Um, and I always have faith that it's gonna get done, you know, it might get done into December, but, but typically it gets done and I think they do a good job for us. Um, so thank you guys for that. And just thank you, Greg, um, for how you outlined uh, everything on the levy. That's something for years that you know, we'd get the proposed percentage, um, but not really a lot of input on what those percentages mean and how they affect us. Um, it's something I've asked for in the past and we haven't really gotten, so I, I appreciate having that information, kind of look at it and better understand um, what those different numbers, what those different percentage options would mean and how it would affect the village. So um, thanks for outlining that for us. That's it.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy. Trustee Hargit.
Uh, the only thing I have is, you know, Greg mentioned earlier that we are looking at the uh, food truck ordinance. Uh, and so I, I know he and Pat will continue working on that uh, as pandemic allows. But I did want to clarify, but a few residents reached out to me uh, expressing frustration that they thought we had created a ban on food trucks and just wanted to clarify that there is not a ban on food trucks. We have a, a very prescriptive ordinance that defines when and where they're allowed to be used. Uh, but there is no ban. Uh, and, and just reinforce that we are looking at that ordinance to see if there are changes that need to be made uh, in light of requests that we, we've had recently. Uh, but there was this suggestion that we had made some uh, either as a response to COVID or, or just uh, on our own uh, uh, made some ban and, and that's not the case. Uh, in fact, the ordinance that's on the books, I, I believe has been on there and Bob Long could probably correct it for multiple decades now. Uh, so it's probably overdue to get looked at again.
Nineteen streets.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. Thank you, trustee Hargit. Uh, trustee Weiss.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to uh, uh, thank uh, everybody for their passion on the tax levy and the monies. I'm looking forward to doing a very creative budget this year. Maybe Greg and I can get together and get, do some creative thinking and out of the box to see maybe we can get money from outside instead of inside. But who knows? Also, I did talk to Tim and uh, we both agreed that uh, wow, this year the leaves dropped all at one time. And that's why we're having a difficult time picking up the leaves. You know, it's, it's one of those things. I noticed that I've been out there blowing leaves like crazy and the wind comes and blows them right back again. So so uh, yeah, it is tough on Groot to, to do what they do. And I, I watch all the trucks go through there and doesn't take long for them to get filled up either. Um, and then again, uh, looking forward to getting, crunching some numbers on the budget, working with the uh, police, fire and all the other departments. And uh, do some creative budgeting and possibly maybe some creative financing on certain objects and things that we can do. Who knows? We'll see what we come up with. So thank you very much, uh, for all the trustees, Greg, and for all the hard work that you do and the passion that you have.
Thank you, trustee Weiss. Uh, trustee Levin.
Uh, I'd like to thank Chief Street for putting that letter together. Um, help open up all, you know, our minds to understand what's going on. Um, uh, so I thank the fire department for all the personnel there that are, you know, working non-stop uh, just to keep us going and to make the village look good. So um, look forward to the information that uh, uh, Chief Street and uh, Greg can uh, bring out. Um, hopefully we can find some kind of resolution. Um, and then I hope everybody stays safe. Is it?
Thank you, trustee Levin. Trustee Maribella.
All right. So my public works. Our department, Tim's still on. We had a uh, COVID thing. We have other people with COVID. I've had COVID. It's happening. It's COVID is happening. It's happening. Me personally, I had no, I had nothing. I understand that it's real. I get that what happens is real. I get it. I had no effects from it. I did my CDC quarantine from it. I get Justin had, he had different effect. Everybody's gonna have different effects. It's gonna affect people different. I just want you to know COVID, it's real. It's happening to people. Me personally, I had nothing. Zero. Zip. Not a thing from me. It said I'm a silent killer, which I hate to hear that. But it's a good thing that my workers did get affected by it, or I wouldn't have known and I probably would have affected my mother-in-law or, or hurt something. So I just want people to know COVID is real. It happens. Our true and dearly walking and friends had their dad die from it. That's our truly dear firemen people. It happened from the onset. I'm gonna go on a different, now, I, now I'm gonna go on a different tangent now.
Okay.
No, I am. And I'm gonna go dearly. I was born and raised in Wentworth Harbor. Was born and raised in Wentworth Harbor. And you know what the heart of our community was? Harley Bone was the chief of our police. And I'm sorry, and I'm not knocking Mr. Bromlich. I'm not knocking D. Simone. I'm gonna talk about what was the heart of Wentworth Harbor when I was a boy. When I was a boy, our fire department, we had a horn that rang. We had a horn that rang that made it go to different. When I was a boy, the horn rang. Know why the horn rang? Because the firemen had to hear the horn to get out of their beds to come to protect us. Then we got pagers. My dad had a pager. There was a pager. But then they made my dad quit the fire department because he was a trustee. They said you're gonna be both. Then Dick Robards became a trustee, but they let him do it, which to me is pathetic. We won't rain on that. What we're gonna rain on is that Wentworth Harbor was born and bred by the fire department. We used to go get schmelt out of Lake Michigan as kids. I don't know if Justin remembers this, but we were really little kids. We went down to Lake Michigan. We got schmelt out of Lake Michigan, the fire department. It was the biggest group of people. Our police department was five people. Two people. That's what it was. Our fire department was many in this community. Our community was built on the fire department. And I'm sorry I have a passion for this. And I'm sorry that I do this. And I apologize to the residents. But you know what's important to me? Is that our life safety. My company preaches life safety every day. What can you do to protect yourself and protect other people? And I get the police do that. I'm not knocking them. I'm not at all. The fire department is the people that come out every day. They go into these homes. They go into these apartments we have that we want to get rid of. And I'm gonna say it out loud. I don't care anymore. And they go and they might be affected by these people that do heroin. These people that do drugs. But you know what they do? They do it. The police do it also. They do it every day. But we cannot afford to lose our fire department. If you people in Wentworth Harbor think we can lose our fire department, you're absolutely nuts. And I'm not gonna stand for it. And if you don't want to elect me again, I don't care. I really don't. What I'm gonna say is our fire department means more to me than anything in the village of Wentworth Harbor. And it always has. And my family members have done this. And it means the most to me. And it means the most to me. We need public works. I, I, I'm there. I'm doing it. We need all this stuff. We need police. Yeah, we do. Beach Park does it with the sheriffs. I get it. They got the most drug dealers in any town ever. Because Lake County Sheriff's. Because Lake County sheriffs police them. No, Mayor, don't cut me off, please. Our fire department matters in Wentworth Harbor. We were born and bred on our fire department. The people that live here that know that siren rang, they responded. Their pagers rang, they responded. And we got to more advanced stuff. But the fire department of Wentworth Harbor is what is built ever since I've been a member here. And my family's been a member here since nineteen forty-two. And I'm gonna tell you. If, I don't care what anybody else thinks, that's my opinion. And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry for ranting and raving on it, but we don't have a fire department here. We don't have people that respond to our own people and have always protected tax-wise and everything else. What do we have in Wentworth Harbor? Thank you.
By the way, I do remember the smell parties.
I'd like to say, we do have a great fire department and awesome police department. And I respect every one of the first responders, always have, always will. It's a job that I wouldn't want to do. And they put their life on the line on D. D. D., especially during COVID. I want to thank Greg for all that you do too and, and, you know, all the department heads. They work, they work more now than they did six, eight months ago because they're working on less people. Unless they're, they're doing more for less, basically. But but I want also, since we're going into tier three mitigation, starting Friday morning, midnight on Thursday. I would ask that every trustee, every resident, please at least once a week, purchase something from a local restaurant and patronize our local businesses as much as you're able to, so that they could stay no, no, stay afloat. We don't want to lose them. I know that they, you know, they were shut down early in the year and now they're gonna be for the most part shut down now too. So please patronize our local businesses as much as you're able to. So on that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. John? All right. Roll call, please.
Hargit. Levin. Maribella. McCarthy. Weiss. Whitmore.
Motion adjourned, or me, meeting adjourned. Now I just want to say, stay safe and stay healthy, everybody.
I want to apologize for being so passionate to everybody, but I am passionate. And, and, and I'm sorry. No, but Wentworth Harbor means more to me than anything. And I don't know how you guys realize that, but and I apologize. A lot to me. It means a lot to me. And I'm sorry.
Good night.
Good night.